We are live, Judge.
All right. Good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, October 22, 2024. We're here for the regular session of Hunt County Commissioners' Court. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order and ask Commissioner Martin to lead us in prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to our flags.
Shall we pray? My most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for those people that attended this meeting. We ask you to continue protecting this great country that we live in. We thank you for the gift of life. We ask those that have suffered through the hurricane, if they will relieve them. Also, we pray for those lost lives and the families that have lost lives. We ask you to continue blessing humanity. In Christ's name we ask, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one and indivisible. Thank you, everyone. We have Commissioner Hutchins, Martin, and our President, and I'm Judge Stovall. I'll be presiding over the meeting. Mr. Monroe and Commissioner Harrison are not here today. They're absent. Commissioners, we got the minutes from October 8, 2024, regular session. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Shall move?
Second.
A motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action four, minutes, October 11, 2024, special session. Entertain a motion for approval.
Shall move?
Second.
And a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. This time, we'll have public testimony. Speakers are limited to three minutes and should conduct themselves in a civil manner. The Commissioners' Court cannot take action when items not listed on the agenda in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act. Concerns will be addressed by county staff. They may be placed on a future agenda or addressed by some other course of response. Anybody wish to speak today? Anybody online? No comments online? Being done, I'll close the public testimony. There's no old business, Commissioners, new business, the consent calendar. Entertain a motion for approval of the consent calendar.
移到
Second.
A motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. B, action items, approval of accounts payable.
Make a motion, we pay the bills.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of line item transfers.
Make a motion to approve line item transfers?
Second.
Got a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of budget amendments.
Make a motion, we approve budget amendments.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of payroll personnel.
Make a motion to approve payroll personnel?
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number one, unfortunately, they've had to cancel their, they had some testing going on at Roy City High School. We had some kids that were going to make a presentation, FFA students, so they're going to have to pass on doing it this year. They can't, we can't get them on an agenda in time to meet their deadlines. So that'll just, that'll be passed on today, not brought up. Action item two, the quarterly report for Northeast Texas Children's Museum. Charlene.
Good morning. Our attendance for June, July, and August at the Children's Museum was 10,993. And I know sometimes people think that we're all about field trips, but this is the summertime when just parents and grandparents are bringing their children. And the total was almost 11,000. Our attendance for the year is 38,867. During the summer months, we offered science wizardry, Pilot Day, Kids Health Day, fossil fun on the Suffer River, but the most popular event was Spa Day with all the little girls. We participated in North Texas Giving Day. We do each year close a week right after Labor Day, and that is our time to fix everything that's broken. We also painted floors and got a lot done during that week. Our field trips have begun a little earlier each year as we get busier and busier, and our first field trip this year was in September, and it was from a school in Garland. We have field trips that we're looking forward to from Anna, Melissa, and throughout Northeast Texas. We recently had our very largest group, it was a school from Roy City, and they brought eight classes of students, and they all opted to pay for lunch as well as their field trip. So that was probably our largest group at one time. One thing that has been interesting to me, and I've noticed it especially after COVID, is that when a group like this comes, there may be as many as 50 parents. And so that also adds to our door receipts for that day. I'm not sure, I'm glad they come. It's the best public relations we have is for those parents to come and see the museum and then want to come back on another day. And even though they bring all those volunteers, we have a museum staff where we have a field trip facilitator for each class that comes through. So we're fine if they don't, but we love having all those parents. We just finished our ghostly glow night, which was our Halloween type event, and we had that a week ago, and that was successful. And before we know it, it's going to be time for brunch with Santa. The year goes fast. We thank you for your support.
Thank you, Charlene. Any questions? Entertain a motion for approval.
Shall move?
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item three, the quarterly report for Audie Murphy Cock Museum. Susan.
Morning. Thank you for letting me come and present our report to you guys. Over the last quarter, our visitors came from 31 different states in the District of Columbia. Internationally, they came from England, Macedonia, El Salvador, Switzerland, Australia, Luxembourg, and the Netherlands. There was a total 1,614 paid visitors to the museum, and a total 1,806 people actually signed our guestbook. Our visitors spent 33 nights in local hotels, which included Hampton Inn, Comfort Suites, Holiday Inn, and Best Western. Some of our tours this quarter came from the Trail Life Scout Group, Wesley Church, the Bar Nun Cowboy Church, and a homeschool group out of Kaufman. Our lunch break speakers this quarter, in July, Michelle Hall spoke about the Sunshine Acres Animal Sanctuary. In August, Katie Conrad gave a program about the history of Rockwall County. And in September, Jay Gilmer talked about beekeeping. It amazed me how many people around here keep bees. That was pretty cool. We also had a World War II roundtable program where World War II veteran Don Graves talked about the fighting in the Iwo Jima, and he actually served in that area over there. It was really cool. We had over 100 people come to, so that was amazing. In July, the museum had its 16th Annual Summer Camp Program that is geared towards six- to 10-year-olds. This year's theme was Camp Fort Apache, and they made arts and crafts, played games, and sang songs related to the Old West era. In August, Riley Wilson was the entertainment at the 18th Annual Heritage Dinner. We had our Muntsey at the Museum event in August. Our gun show and our second motorcycle poker run took place in September. We had a great time, and 90 bikers participated in the poker run. So that's really cool. That's really starting to grow. And we also had booths at the GIST Teachers Vendor Fair and the Beck School Resource Fair. That was a new thing that they did this year. So that was, that was awesome. For our movie nights, we showed The Horse Soldiers starring John Wayne, Mom Paquette on Vacation starring Marjorie Mayne and Percy Kilbride, and The Crime Doctor's Strangest Case starring Warner Baxter. We also installed a new temporary exhibit on the Flaming Flashes. And coming up, this will be the first time we are taking part in the Altricite Tour Homes this year as well. The Indy Geyard House will be a part of that, so it'll be decorated old-fashioned way from late 1800s, early 1900s. So that'd be really cool. Make sure to come out for that. And we are working on details, but sometime this fall, winter, we will probably be closing for a week as we get the new driveway put in. So we are excited about that as well. If you have any questions, be glad to answer.
Questions, Commissioners?
I don't have any questions, but I want to thank y'all for what you do. Y'all are influencing a lot of people, especially young people's lives. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And yesterday, we had a military convoy that came. That was awesome. They're going down the Jefferson Highway. It's like a thing that they did. And they all came in like old-timey army trucks and stuff. And so that was fun.
Well, Susan, I was told before the meeting that y'all are having Frontier Days.
Oh, yeah. Frontier Day is next weekend. Not this Saturday, but the next Saturday from 10 to 1.
Perfect. Bring your kids out.
Definitely.
Entertain a motion for approval.
Shall move?
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number four, quarterly report for Boys and Girls Club of Northeast Texas.
Hi, good morning. My name is Winnie Shaw with the Boys and Girls Club here in Greenville. We had a late start for the school year because we had to leave R.C., but a parent got on Facebook and reached out, and we got Melissa from 418 reached out to us and gave us a place to be. So we got to start on September 9th, a little late. We currently have 76 enrolled, and we're serving an ADA of about $50, $50, 50 kids a day.
Where are y'all located now?
418 on 1912, Joe Ramsey East.
Okay. Got you.
Yep.
You gotta put this mic down for me, huh? Well, good morning. My name is Brenda Chavez, as many of y'all know. And I'm a club director for our Lone Oak. I want to start by expressing my heartfelt gratitude, like I do every time, because we truly appreciate your support in what we do. And I want to start off with just a quote that says, "It takes a village to raise a child," perfectly encapsulates the essence of what we strive to achieve as an organization. With that, with your support, we are making a tangible difference in the lives of the kids that we serve. Today, I want to share an inspiring story about a young lady named Row. And Row is now in second grade, but when she started our program, she was in kindergarten. And this remarkable young lady was recognized as our Youth of the Month for the month of August. But over the years, with the support of the organization as well, with the parents, we have been helping Row develop impulse control techniques through our social and emotional program, which is our Smart Moves Program. Now, Row is paying it forward by teaching other kids that are either younger than her, sometimes even older than her, which is truly inspiring to see that. As a club director, it brought tears to my eyes one day to see Row take lead and just share what she has learned with her peers. Her growth is a testament to the impact of our programs and the importance of the community support. Once again, I thank you for your unwavering support and hope that we can continue to make the change in the community. So thank you so much.
Thank you for what y'all do. Both of you.
Do you have any questions?
Questions, Commissioners?
For those who don't know, that location is next to Authentic Life Fellowship.
Yep. And they also are letting us use four of their rooms in the back to help support the number of kids that we have.
Good. Entertain a motion for approval.
Shall move?
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank y'all. Action item five, a proclamation proclaiming November as National Alzheimer's Awareness and Alzheimer's Caregiver Month. I'm going to read a proclamation. Whereas Alzheimer's disease is an irreversible and progressive brain disease that slowly erodes precise memories, thinking skills, and the ability to perform simple tasks. And whereas every 65 seconds, someone in the United States develops Alzheimer's, and worldwide, every three seconds. Whereas worldwide, nearly 50 million people have Alzheimer's or related dementia. And whereas in the United States, there are 7 million people living with Alzheimer's disease, and unless a cure is found, it is estimated that as many as 13 million will have the disease by 2050. And whereas nearly two-thirds of those with Alzheimer's disease are women, and whereas Alzheimer's is the seventh leading cause of death in the United States, and whereas Remember for Me is a nonprofit organization that benefits Hunt County caregivers caring for the loved ones who are diagnosed with Alzheimer's or dementia. Remember for Me offers compassion, education, and support to caregivers and families as they embrace loved ones on this new journey. And therefore, it is proclaimed, we proclaim November 2024 as National Alzheimer's Awareness Month, as well as Alzheimer's Caregiver Month in Hunt County, Texas. Jake, anybody here with, you have anything you want to comment on, or? Okay, thank you.
I would like to comment on this.
Sure.
Judge, this started out a long time ago, but who brought it to our attention was Ms. John Horn.
Yep.
And I wanted to make the mention of that because ever since then, we have read this proclamation. So anyway, I thank her for caring. I know she, she, her and her family struggled with it, a lot of that, but.
Yeah, her father had it for a long time, and they had a lot of, a lot to take care of. All right. Entertain a motion for approval.
Shall move?
A motion second. All in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you for what y'all do. Let's see. Action item number six, resolution authorizing Hunt County to make a grant to the senior citizens resourcing Public Transit, Inc., organization amount of 5,000 in Texas Feeding Texas Home Delivery Meal Grant Program. Entertain a motion for approval.
Shall move?
Second.
Got a motion and second. All in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Action item seven, a memorandum for the Sheriff's Office requesting authorization to send two communication employees to training in Wisconsin for 911 telecommunication and missing abducted children scholarships will be, will cover travel and hotel expense per them is not covered and is estimated to be around $354. Entertain a motion for approval.
Shall move?
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number eight, quarterly report for the City of Commerce Animal Shelter. Commissioners, entertain a motion for approval of this.
I shall move.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action number nine, the Treasurer's Monthly Report for August 2024. Brittany?
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning. In your packet, you will have your Treasurer's Monthly Report for August 2024. We have a month-end balance as of 8:31 of $60,187,005.11, and that is cash and invested funds. All of the bank recs have been reconciled, and the auditors and treasurer's books agree. And at this point, just for the court's information and the public's information as well, if you don't see me presenting these as frequently, it's we're dealing with all of our end-of-year closeouts. August went a little bit longer because that's our state's fiscal year with some of our grants that we have, so it took a while to get some of those closed out. September, we probably won't see again until December, as we probably won't close that out until November. So just for the courts and the public's knowledge, but that is August.
Thank you, Brittany. Entertain a motion for approval.
Shall move?
Second.
Got a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action number 10, a budget amendment to transfer accounts payable budget expenses and three employees' salaries and its associated employees' expenses to the supervision of the county treasurer, and transfer department head salary and related expenses to the supervision of the county judge and the county judge's budget.
May I ask a question? I believe there's a typographical layer when it says, and transfer department heads salaries. Is that a?
Head is, it's.
It's one person.
It's one person, yeah.
Okay. May I ask who that person is?
Brittany.
Okay, good. Thank you. If there will be a correction in reference to that.
This is.
I shall move.
Nope.
I shall move. Accept it.
Let, let her.
Yes.
This is something that, that we took up during the budget workshop sessions that we had at the end of September prior to the approval of the budget. We did not approve that in the, or in the approved budget, or we did not move forward with that in the approved budget because we had the questions of the bonding for the three employees. We have since got the bonding back for, all of the applications back, and everything came back positive. So all three are able to be bonded as required under the county treasurer. So this is just moving forward with that as we said that we would in the month of October to transfer that under the treasurer.
You have enough budgetary authority to pay the bonds, or we going to have to do something later?
No, sir. I believe with this budget adjustment that is there and that was included in the packet as well, that it should have plenty.
Okay. All right. All right. Now, anything motion for approval?
I shall.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Brittany. Action item number 11, to discuss, consider, and adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of the Texas Community Bot Grant Program application to the Texas Department of Agriculture for the 2025-2026 Community Development Fund. Charles?
And Judge, thank you for, first off, for bringing Grant Works on board to work with you on this, on this program. Before you today is a resolution to apply for the program. If any of you recall prior application periods for this, the main scoring components are previous funding and matching funds and poverty rate. Hunt County rates pretty well in all of those. The last grant of this nature that you received was in 2018 program year. So it's based on three prior cycles or six years. So those have expired now, so you receive full points in that category. So you'll be a good contender for this. We don't know who all else is applying, so it's a competitive scene out there. So the grant funds are $750,000. The types of activities you can participate in applying for are water, sewer, street, flood, and drainage. Those are the first priorities that you'll see in the item number two that you're claiming that you will apply for because that's a points factor also. You're also committing $15,000 of, of matching funds, which is 2%, which is extremely low for a county, but that's kind of an across-the-board rule across the state. The application due date is December 9th for the Phase One application. The Texas Department of Agriculture will then score the applications out, and you'll be notified if you're invited to the Phase Two competition in mid to late January of 2025 or the same timeframe in 2026. It's a two-year cycle you're applying within, so you could gain funding in either one of those cycles. So it could be a shorter period, or it could be a drawn-out period. At the time you're, you are invited to apply for Phase Two, that becomes the project development phase to where you'll select a project. These funds have to go towards areas of low to moderate income. These are HUD funds that you're applying for, and so they will have that stipulation. That can either be determined by census data or door-to-door income surveys, which Grant Works does provide that service if a target area is selected to determine. So keep those things in mind as we're moving forward, but I'm happy to answer any questions for you. Those, the Phase Two applications will be due in June of, of 2025 or June of 2026, just depending on which cycle you're selecting.
Yeah, I understand you saying the application in December, we have to select if it's going to be water, sewer, streets, or something. Are we just applying for the grant?
Just the category, just that group of.
So we can do all of them?
You can do one, you can do one out of that. You can do a combination of all. But you're committing to that group of, they call it a first, first-tier priority. HUD has 24 different activities that you could potentially select from, but your region in the north-central Texas region, the committee selected that those are the most important factors for communities in this region. So with this resolution, you're committing to applying to at least one of those first, those top-tier priorities, which are water, sewer, street, flood, drainage, and, and.
But this would also have to do with basically water, cash water, all these other water departments in the county. Is this that grant or not?
This, this, this is that grant. This is that same, this is that same pool of funds.
Good enough. And the last time I remember, like I said, it was in 2018, and I believe it, if I'm not mistaken, it was a water company up towards Commerce.
I think it was North Hunt.
That was North Hunt.
Is that right?
I believe it supported some improvements out.
Okay. When we do get these applications in from these water departments, basically, will it be like it has been in the past, the Commissioners' Court decides where it goes, or have y'all?
That's completely up to the court.
We were just the sponsors in years past. We had to be a sponsor of it for them to get it, if I understood it right.
That's correct. They're not eligible to apply, but, but keep in mind, it can go towards any of those categories. It can go towards street and drainage.
That's what I'm saying. But in the past, basically, it has come back before this Commissioners' Court in reference to what we have in people, like all these different water companies applying, and that's what we addressed it to.
Yes, sir.
I think they're the only ones that really knew that much about it until we got Grant Works on board and found out we could do roads and drainage also. So we, we never had applied for it as a county, but we had participated with the rural water companies in the past.
That's correct.
Good enough. Thank you.
But it's all, so the 750s, just for Hunt County, whatever, whatever form it takes, they can't go get 500 and us go get 750 years.
No, sir.
It's total for the county.
It's one application that the.
For the entire county. Okay. I just want to make sure everybody understands that it's, that's what it is.
Only governmental entities, or, or I'll say, cities and county, city, county, and tribal governments are the only governmental entities allowed to apply for these funds.
Okay.
The cities, if I'm correct, the cities can apply. This is what the county's applying for, not the cities.
That's correct. This is your own application. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Entertain a motion for approval. Anybody have any other questions?
Might have been answered. Thank you.
Entertain a motion for approval.
Shall move?
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Charles. Thank you for what y'all are doing for us.
Appreciate it.
Action item 12, court approval of the fiscal year 2025 resolution for the Indigent Defense Grant Program. Entertain a motion for approval.
Shall move? Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item 13, approve an interlocal agreement between Hunt County Jail and Hunt County Hospital District providing treatment for jail inmates and suspected tuberculosis infections. Should that be Hunt County proper, not Hunt County Jail? Interlocals were the county, right? Not the jail?
Is it working?
Judge, my understanding from when I was putting this together was that it is the jail, but I can certainly check on that for you if you'd like to move this to a different point in the agenda.
I, that was just a curiosity question, because normally, county does all the best in this. So I assumed it would be just the county and not the jail. Jail doesn't have any thought, only makes any difference, nobody going to care, but, but it needs to be.
Certainly would be the court acting.
Yes.
For the jail, yes.
Yeah.
We're acting for the jail in reference to this, correct?
Yes, yeah.
This is written. Okay. I would like to say this before we go any further, because it's going to be a question. I will have to sustain from this in reference to conflict of interest in reference, and I've already talked to the gentleman about this. So you're going to have to explain basically how we can move forward, or if we can't.
I'll have to table it till the next meeting.
That's what I'm saying.
I sent a message to Daniel about this. He informed me that apparently you can take a vote on this, but it's going to have to be unanimous other than Commissioner Martin.
Okay, good. That's fine.
Any other?
On my back. We can vote if, if we need to bring it back next week.
People voting on it, correct?
Yeah, okay.
But they, but you both have to vote yes for it to be approved.
Right, I got you.
Judge, just to clarify, this, this is essentially a renewal of our existing.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they provide medical services for. Buddy, you got a comment?
The, Buddy Oxford, the jail commission has come out and stated, we have to have a specific agreement with the hospital for them to deal with our TB patients. Always before they do, they, the hospital has always taken care of our inmates, but for some reason, we have to have this one just for TB.
Okay, so strictly for tuberculosis, yeah?
Yes. And we're supposed to have it done by the first of next month.
Okay. So for belt and suspenders, can we just make a motion that it's Hunt County Jail and/or Hunt County?
Sure, yeah, that should be fine. Sure, yeah, that should be fine.
Yeah, okay, alright. Well, in that case, I'll make a motion that we approve this item for the Hunt County, Hunt County Jail and/or Hunt County to do an interlocal agreement, Hunt Memorial Hospital District providing treatment for our jail inmates with suspected tuberculosis infection.
Second.
Yeah, so I got a motion and a second, and one abstention. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 14, approve an interlocal participation agreement between Hunt County and the County Information Resource Agency, CIRA, is authorized by the Texas Interlocal Cooperative Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 791. Commissioners, this is, benefits our IT department, they get training through it, and it gets other things that's free, so we will, I talked to Brandon about it, he, he really wants this done, so. I entertain a motion for approval.
No move.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye. All, all opposed, motion carries. Action number 15, request to construct electrical power distribution facilities, which will be in the right-of-way of County Road 2508 in Precinct 2, under normal stipulations. Entertaining motion for approval?
No moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action number 16, request seeking permission to temporarily close Hunt County Road 4812 from November 1st through November 16th, 2024, in order to transfer high pressure, pressure natural gas from one existing pipeline to another. This will be done to conduct maintenance work on the now gas-free pipeline. The gas transfer will be performed by several compressor trucks that will be located at the KMNTP valve site located adjacent to County Road 4812. KMNTP feels that the road needs to be shut down to the public while this high-pressure gas transfer is being conducted for safety reasons in Precinct 4, under normal stipulations. Entertaining motion for approval?
Judge, I assume Commissioner Harrison is aware and in agreement, okay.
Also, I would like to make sure that we have Richard Hill knowing about this also.
I'm not positive about that, but I'm sure that Steve has talked to him about it.
Okay. I shall move.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action number 17, upgrade of approximately 9,408.96 feet of County Road 1003, from dirt to rock in Precinct 1 at county's expense.
Make a motion to approve this upgrade?
Second.
Got a motion in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action number 18, widening of County Road 1118, four feet for approximately 605 feet from dirt to rock to oil sand in Precinct 1, money is in escrow.
Make a motion to approve this upgrade?
Second.
Got a motion in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action number 19, widening of County Road 1119, four feet for approximately 1,273.10 feet from dirt to rock to oil sand in Precinct 1, money is in escrow.
Make a motion to approve this upgrade?
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action number 20, variance request for road frontage at County Road 771, County Road 2582. Ryan, you gonna brief us?
I was contacted by Ms. Thibodeau, who is wanting to purchase some property from a friend. This is, it's in a platted subdivision, it's an older-platted subdivision, but it would require replat ultimately to do the split. The proposed frontage is 127 feet, where the requirement for a 1.6 acre track is 150 feet. So, she's a little bit, little bit shy on it. That's, that's what you got, so.
Well, Commissioners, you know, on the plat, there were other 100-foot lots. Matter of fact, I guess, one of the lots that the seller is retaining was platted as a 100-foot lot, so they're, really not changing the lot, except making a, what was a 100-foot lot, 200, and what was 200, a 100-foot lot.
That's right. You're just kinda flipping it around.
Yeah.
There are several lots throughout this subdivision, like you said, that are pretty narrow, and it looked like it was designed to go one way, and then at some point in time, before the plat was recorded, they probably went in, called audible, and, and split a couple of these lots down the middle.
And this was recorded back in, the plat was recorded in 75, so it's all under old rules, but it's consistent with what was done back then, so.
Is this red line on this here that goes through the house and the barn, is that the one that's being split?
Going through the house and the barn.
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking at this.
That's, if you look at the next page, there's actually an exhibit from the surveyor showing what they're, what they're wanting to do. That's just kind of a, an exhibit that I got from the, from the CAD, so that you could see-
Yeah, that's just where the aerial photography didn't line up, match the scale. That's just a, that's just a error in the, in the scale factors of the maps.
Well, and that red line that you see there, that's an existing lot line. He owns both sides of that lot line.
Oh, that's, so that is a tax-bound line, actually.
That's right. The green track is the, the proposed lot that requires variance, the blue track is what the owner would be-
That's there because of a separate tax ID number, and it does run through it on the survey, so that is correct.
That's right. If you look at the dash line on the survey, it shows running through the metal building there.
It's not the map, it's just that that was a separate tax parcel. Alright, entertaining motion for approval?
No moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Replat of lots 2 and 3 of Nalan Glendale addition in Precinct 2.
Okay, this replat is actually just kind of a technicality. The owner is wanting to convey some property to his daughter, so that she can build a house there on the, on the family home place, but it's in a platted subdivision, so to change that, that plat legally, it's gonna require replat, and of course, a public notice, but it meets all the, all the county requirements.
Alright, Commissioners, you got any questions before we open it public? Alright, at this time, I'll open the public testimony for this. Anybody wishes to speak for or against the replat of lots 2 and 3, Nalan Glendale addition? Come forward, state your name, anything online. Being done, I'll close the public hearing. Entertaining motion for approval?
No move.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action number 22, the final plat for Ryan Acres and Precinct 1.
Alright, this is a, a simple two-lot subdivision, meets all the, all the requirements.
Alright, Commissioners, entertaining motion for approval?
No moved.
It's my precinct, Philip, you got a second to this one?
Oh.
I need a second from somebody.
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you.
I'll do both.
Alright, I got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action number 23, the final plat for Park West Edition in Precinct 1.
Alright, this is a, this is a plat, actually, for the Greenville Economic Development Corporation. We had some, some questions on it, had to get with, with a couple of the utility providers around to, so that we could get all the, the county-required easements, utility easements and such along there, which took a little bit of time, but they, they worked with us and worked with the EDC, so this, this meets all our, our county requirements.
And so, that lot 3, they're already under construction, aren't they?
Yes, that's the-
That's the saddle shop, yeah.
That, Equalbrand's been here a couple of times, talking to us, talking to the court about, about what they're doing, so that's right, that third lot is, is for them, so they'll get that thing finalized and moving.
Alright, entertaining motion for approval?
No moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action number 24, the final plat for Dian, Dianson?
Works for me.
Yeah, golly. Whatever, addition Precinct 3.
Alright, this is a, this is a subdivision, it's down there off of Pump Station Road, and it's one of these old problematic, unrecorded subdivisions, down in the area of the Gaylards-Woods addition. There are several different phases down, along in that area. Old private road, established years and years ago, there again, never had a recorded plat. So, when the owner, Mr. Dianson, contacted me about this, we, we met at the property, discussed what needed to be done regarding this private road that had no description, had no, no nothing on it really, other than a number and a drawing on the, on the CAD map.
There was no easement or anything recorded?
There was nothing.
Oh, wow.
Regarding this thing. There were a couple of existing houses that were built way back, that had just easement on it, but there was never any kind of a, you know, description of this roadway. So, they went in, and they had the roadway surveyed, they created a road maintenance association, and dedicated the roadway to the road maintenance association. They actually got all of the property owners that used the road, even the, the old existing ones that were there previously, they got everybody to join.
So, is that ever, ever adjoining, lot owner sign?
Every adjoining lot owner save one that doesn't access the road, they come right off of Pump Station.
Hmm, good.
So, uh-
Your Honor.
They're actually making this situation a lot better than it was.
This, this was an illegal subdivision, in fact, it was so noted in reference to it, this had been going on for about 15 or 20 years.
Gaylards probably created 30 or 40 ago.
Yes, I'm talking about, I've been involved in it 20 years. The thing about it is, it's a piece of property that could have some, something done, and possibly used. What I am concerned about in reference to, we don't need another subdivision down there that possibly is not taken care of, and we, I did look at the contract that they have drawn up in reference to it, and the gentleman Dizon made the statement that he would upgrade that that's in part, and in front of his property, and I would think that it needs to be upgraded. I believe they got a 60-foot right-of-way now, and it's surveyed and all this, but if he'll go on and put, he, he was talking about putting rap, whether he uses rap or gravel, I have no problem with that, but if he will do that piece of property, and then if they'll work toward doing the rest of the property, I have, and that is with the stipulations that they do this, I would say that this would be a good thing for him.
So, you want, you're wanting to make a stipulation, they have to do all that prior to us approving the plat?
I think he ultimately wants the road abutting, this track to be platted, to be, to be upgraded, or have the surface upgraded from, you know, at least to a rap.
It's rock now.
It's gravel now, and, and is in need of a little, a little attention. It's an old unused private road that's been used by just a handful of people, so he's, he's wanting to get that done, that's adjacent to this plat. I speculate that there will probably be additional lots cut off of this private road in the future, and at that point in time, obviously, they'll be required to plat as well.
How far out is it to the Pump Station Road?
Oh, it's off of Pump Station.
It's a thousand feet or so back off the road, it's a pretty good distance.
This private road is all the way back out to it?
Yes.
A whole thousand feet?
Yes, yes, the private road's actually looped. It loops all the way around. This property is at the very south end, farthest away from Pump Station Road that it can be.
You know where Red Baron is? It's right-
I know, I know, I'm, for me, I just, I didn't, I didn't know what, how far this road went to get to Pump Station, I didn't look at the map. Philip, I'm trying to figure out how to word a motion, I, I don't, you know, it's, you're talking about upgrading 275 feet or so from what is already rock to rap or, or gravel's what you said, so it's already-
Talking about in front of his property.
I understand that, but it's already gravel in front of it, and you said rap or gravel, and so, I don't know.
They brought it, they brought the term rap in, that they would be willing to do that.
You'd offered, the owner had offered to put rap on the section abutting his property.
Is this gravel new, or has that been there a long time?
It's, it's been there for awhile.
Okay. That's fine, I'm, so I guess I'm asking to, for a motion to approve the plat contingent upon the upgrade of private road 3714 in front of the proposed lot 1, from gravel to rap. Is that correct, Philip?
That's, that's correct, that's what they stipulated they would do.
Okay, I'm asking for a motion to approve it.
No move.
Before, before it's, I guess, before I second it, so, he, he's offered to do that, is he gonna do that anyway? My concern is whether or not we really have authority to do this.
He is, he is offered to, to bring it up. Whenever we met at the subdivision, there was some, I expressed some concern about the, the road surface, that it's gravel, it had grass growing in it, it, it needed to be repaired.
Mark, I think to answer to your question probably is, we have the authority, if it's a subdivision that's gonna have private roads in it, if it was new, we would require them to bring it up to current county road standards to do it, so this kind of follows that same theory to me, that even though it's not all being platted, they're gonna plat it one piece at a time, this is a plat, and if they're gonna upgrade in front of it, then they're meeting what we've done everywhere else.
It's not a subdivision that's requiring a replat, that has lots already throughout, this is a brand-new lot on a fairly unoccupied road.
Yeah.
Just really never used.
Well, if, if he's already agreed to it, then, you know, that, that's fine, I'll second, I'll second the motion, but I just wanted to clarify.
It's different.
It is different. Mr. Dianson, I want to say his name, just so we had a, a fourth way of saying it.
Alright, I got a motion in second.
I want to make sure that this is said, this road will not be maintained by the county.
Correct.
That's why they set up the-
Not be.
Yeah, it's only, it's dedicated, you've got roadway easement, there's no dedication on this for the easement, they filed it as a separate document.
It's a separate document.
Alright, so we got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action number 25, did you get all that, Mickey?
I hope that I did.
Action number 25, the final, final plan of rainy addition in Precinct 4.
One-lot subdivision meets all of our requirements.
Yeah, alright, entertaining motion for approval?
No move.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Is there anybody you got, any messages online? John, we need anything, executive session?
I need if there's anything you need to ask, anybody needs to ask about-
Nope, everybody alright?
Good.
Alright, short meeting. Entertaining motion to adjourn?
No move.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.